Oh, yes, I'll shut it off.
Oh, I should see you.
Nice. Lindsay, Ohio. I don't know anybody in Lindsay, Ohio.
Let's review the Roberts Rules of Order.
What?
The Roberts Rules of Order. Let's, let's, let's review those.
I heard that.
Should've left mine here.
I heard that.
Well, I got a phone call from Josh. I'm sitting out in my truck. And he calls and says, hey, the front door's locked.
What?
When I, when he called, I thought, oh, hell.
Are you gonna talk? We don't, we don't need to talk.
Sit there. Oh, shoot. Second generation right there. It's my son.
What'd you say?
Yeah, it's one of them. One of the motley crew. All right, he's actually.
I'm comfortable.
Maybe it's just me.
Probably.
Yeah, we did watch again today.
You have hot flashes?
Oh, I did today. Got the Georgia trees yet for planting this fall?
What have you done? I got stuck in traffic. You were going plum with Jen, had to go to the side. Georgia's a hospital visit. I couldn't get away. I haven't talked to Bill. If you have enough money, I could get some trees. Get trees, they're good out quick. Yeah. I get two inch.
Oh, it might be.
Hundred trees?
Two inch calipers. I don't know what kind, but to see what they have.
I don't know.
You get a hundred trees?
This is according to how much money I have. South Main East Zone, we planted a few places around town, so.
It's a hole we filled in on the corner.
Kenny?
Really?
Yeah. That's why we always plant the fall instead of the spring. Because even if you're a spring, plant it fall, you almost have water, but you're never in at all.
So I guess, uh, I guess.
I remember driving through about that little station next to the Ohio Railroads.
So you got you.
Unless, unless it's on the state contract.
Like ranges along Park.
Uh huh.
Like all those.
And the ones in the circling. Elm and Lockwood.
Oh.
Are you listening to that too?
Listening to what?
The Guardians game.
You're here?
I was listening to it in the truck. I heard Manzardo or, uh.
Bonanza?
Yeah, Manzardo hit the three one homerun.
You're going to Bonanza?
Oh.
Pardon me? No, we don't have it. It's printed, it's on email.
Oh, my God.
Rex, yours is ourcasto@londonohio.gov, right?
That's my son.
I'm emailing her now.
It's one of them. I've, I'll be just as surprised to hear what he says as you will be, so.
Is it Jimson Falls? One of the general falls? Is that a general?
For what?
I mean, this is a surprise.
This sounds like all the same. I turned all the switches on.
Hey. Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Right? Twenty-two? Twenty-two. He's our young.
Oh, he's your baby.
He's the baby.
My baby just turned forty-three.
Forty-three?
It's hard to be, you know, something that's over itself.
At our house, the baby changes. They're getting on the news. Baby one, baby, and the next one shows up.
No Rich tonight?
No.
All right. There'll be no. Rich is becoming the little social butterfly. He went to a concert last, what was it, last month? And then I wonder where he's at this, this year. Right, listen, little social butterfly.
Did he go to Bonanza?
Oh, there you go. He's a social butterfly.
Rich is always doing something. Busy.
Hmm?
He's busy. He's always doing something.
How old's he?
How old? I think seventy-five.
I'm not too sure of how old he is. We should all be so lucky.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I hope not. Hopping around like that.
Make sure you speak up tonight. People say they can't hear you very well.
I'd say. I don't think I, not in this day and age. Yeah.
Are we live, I think I assume?
I think I'd rewind to my forties. I'd rewind to my forties. Because there's a lot of stuff happening.
Forty, never hit my forties. Fifty, that's what hit me. Then once I get fifty, I'll relax.
You're right about that.
You get sold in, you wish you was forty-one.
I haven't eaten. Had breakfast this morning, but I haven't eaten since. My wife informed me it's gonna be leftovers on the house. I'm good with that. Did you pull the attend up? Last night, I checked. It'll be like the latest one from the clerk.
That's yours, though?
Yep. Uh, should be.
Yeah.
Oh, you're in San. You need to inbox. There you go. I also work up, get to me, that's it, y'all, right there.
Call the meeting order. Everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance and then a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Since our clerk is, uh, not here tonight, I'll, uh, take on roll call. All the yays and nays tonight. Uh, so roll call. Councilman Eads.
Here.
Councilman McDaniel.
Here.
Councilman Hayes. Councilman Hitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Trainer.
Here.
Councilman Stahl.
Present.
Councilman Norman.
Present.
Did everybody take a look at the, uh, minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections or concerns?
Yep.
All in favor, pass October third minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Uh, there are no public hearings, uh, no communications announcements. Next is audience concerns.
Step up.
Ah, sir.
Did you want, did you want to speak? This would be your time too, if you, if you want to. Okay. If you just come up, uh, state your name and address for the record, please. Oh. Can you turn that, oh, I'm sorry. Power button.
Some assembly required.
Hey, dumb boy. Oh, that seems to be working now. Uh, I'm Michael Christopher Norman, as opposed to Councilman Norman. And, uh, when asked whether or not I'd like to participate, the first thing that comes to mind is, uh, well, the, the corner of, uh, Center and Main Street, but more importantly, the pedestrian flashing signs in town. And what I've noticed as a citizen of London on the streets who walks around a lot is that this implementation of the pedestrian signs allows for more flow between the different lights, but it also, in my experience, has turned High and Main Street into a congested nightmare. And then alternatively, the Center and Main Street intersection has a concrete partition to keep people from treating it as a two-lane road, because it's not. But that partition barely ever stays in what I would describe as adequate condition. Aside from that, though, no complaints.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing? Okay.
Did you say nothing?
All right, on to, uh, committee reports. Greg?
Personnel and Finance Committee will meet next Monday at five-thirty in the conference room next door. We've not had a meeting since the last council meeting.
Brent?
Attended a public service and the public safety. The, uh, fire report. As departmental EMS training, K to minor fix with Ohio Health. Uh, departmental EMS training indications of CPAP from Madison Health. Departmental fire training, drivers training. Hosted several students for ride time for tolls in grant paramedic class. Provided EMS services for high school football games. Participated in touch at truck event at Presbyterian Daycare Center. And participated in retired chief mentor funeral. Hosted head start group for station tour. That's it for that.
Thank you. Andy?
Did you have the?
You can do it.
Oh, you want me to do it? All right, I attended the public service meeting October eighth. Uh, we talked about some of the stuff that'll come up tonight. Street Department did their report, uh, Park and Rec's Department did their report. And I'll read through that. The fall outdoor volleyball was canceled due to not, um, lack of interest. Winter basketball registration is open through October twenty-seventh for eighty-five dollars a participant. Player evaluations are the week of November fourth. Registration forms can be picked up at City Hall or you can register online at londonohio.gov backslash O backslash London backslash page backslash youth sports league. Uh, then there's a free volleyball clinic October fifteenth, or was October fifteenth and the twenty-second at London Elementary School Wood Gym. Uh, for any boys or girls, grades K through eight. And, um, if you want to help out with that, you can register to help us, help the rec, Park and Rec Department out. Currently, there was, um, thirty-six signed up. Flyer was, um, handed out at London Elementary, uh, the week before the eighth. The park tables and trash receptacles, um, picnic tables and trashcans have been added to both shelters at Merrimack and the Ball Diamonds. Bike racks and dog waste stations. Uh, they'll be adding bike rack and dog waste stations in the parks as well as additional areas throughout the city. For Cowling Park, uh, Pumpkin Palooza took place this past weekend. They had bounce houses, face painting, pumpkin decorating. Some of our council members were dressed up as Beetlejuice. Ball Diamond Rentals continue to take rentals for the, they're taking rentals for the Ball Diamonds. Cornhole League in the, they're in the process of finalizing details for a cornhole league. Weekly leagues and tournaments have been becoming more popular lately. Uh, update on the storage building. They purchased a twenty-six by thirty-six foot steel frame building from Dayton Barnes. Installation started October ninth. I don't know if that's completed. That's completed. Location is now on existing concrete pad at the sanitation where recycled dumpsters used to sit. That's it for the Park and Rec report. Uh, we also talked about, uh, the Street Department helping out sanitation while they've been short on staff. And the decrease in the dump hours. We also talked about, um, milling and resurfacing the asphalt at the basketball courts and the skateboard park. And that'll be coming to finance this coming Monday. And we also talked about, uh, the Street Department needing a new dump truck, which will be in legislation tonight. And that's pending finance review of that legislation. And we also talked about crosswalks at Cowling Park. And the possibility of additional fines for speeding in that area. And the next service meeting is November twelfth at five o'clock in the meeting room next door, and Mr. Norman will give the Street Department report.
I'm saying.
I don't have anything to add. We haven't had a meeting in our last council session.
Ken, I'd like to comment to Chairman Hitt and the Service Committee. I received a phone call from Joyce Baird. She was very thankful that you've placed, or the city's placed, the, uh, picnic tables out at Merrimack. She likes to, uh, have some family events out there, just impromptu events. And she was one of the persons that called, um, to ask why things were removed. She called me to thank the city and your committee for taking care of that.
Thank you.
John?
I've got the minutes for the Safety Service meeting. We had it on October eighth. We discussed Police Department needs a server, eleven thousand nine ninety-eight. We voted to send it to the Finance Committee for discussion and money. Uh, design phase of the new police building is beginning, but increase, we need to increase appropriations, four hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars. And that amount would be reimbursed us, as many loopholes we've explained to us that the city has to go through. It wouldn't start now till next fall instead of in the spring. And we had all three votes to send it to the Vice, uh, to the Finance Committee. And they're also seeking another loan option. And, uh, we talked about a crosswalk and signal at light at Park and Main for pedestrian traffic. Mr. Castor's to check into the state regulations on that. That's what I have for that. I also have the, uh, Police Minutes. Public Safety Committee briefing October eighth. Denise Dyer was sworn in as an officer ten seven twenty-four. We currently have one open position with one other cadet at Basic Academy. We're reviewing the current list of remaining applications and accepting applications through October thirty-one. Construction manner, manager at risk process was completed with the SSD and architects. Alfred Construction was selected to fill the role of C, uh, I forget what C was, but Mistren will be working with the construction design phase with the architects and LPD. Special thanks to Joe Mogen and Steve Verloni for serving on the selection committee. Several officers have completed a course of instruction at OPADA on pursuit termination techniques. It is our goal to have each officer certified PTT by the end of the year. LPD is in need of new agency server. A more detailed member of this doc will be dis- served at the Council's Finance Committee and Safety Committee, which I just announced. We're reviewing the options particulars of a central dispatch operation with Madison County. Two topics related to the facility construction will be discussed in the Finance and Safety Committees. Those include appropriate appropriations of funds required for obtaining the loan and or grant funding to be repaid once funding is obtained, and the others seeking a loan option. We did receive final certification approval from the Ohio Collaborative Agency on several policies and practices required by the state. Chief Nico participated in the Fairhaven School reading day by reading pickle pie party to five classes. LPD participated in the tabletop exercises over the Madison County Elections Board. In a special note, periodically, the city experiences electrical outages that affect traffic lights and causes concern for residents. We would remind residents to treat intersections with non-functioning lights, traffic lights as four-way stop intersections. Please slow down and be cautious while proceeding through those affected intersections. Also, there is no need to call the Department or the Sheriff's Office to inquire about the outage. Oftentimes, we do know what caused the outage when the situation will be corrected. Large inflective phone calls ties up the dispatchers and hinders our ability to answer those calls that need a police response. We will send notification of pertinent information when it is available through app and the social media sites. Now's a good time to prepare your residents for such events by ensuring you have necessary equipment and procedures in place to take care of yourself or other family members that may have special needs. Be sure to downta, download our app and have your utility provider numbers available for outage. Besides traffic, besides that, besides traffic lights, we've several times the past couple weeks, we've had trains block in town. So the same procedures kind of need to be taken too. The other day, it was backed up all the way to the hospital. I don't know what caused that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Michael?
I was at the public, uh, service meeting and I have the Street Department report. It's two pages, so I'm just gonna hit the highlights. Third Ward Sewer Storm over on Lincoln is now complete. Uh, so that's a good thing. Uh, they've got, they're doing ground prep work for the salt barn, the new one. Crosswalks have all been checked to make sure that the lights are working properly, because we just talked about that. The project between Center, on Center Street between Main and Madison is, hasn't started yet. Uh, it said, this was a week ago, that he said it looks like it's gonna be a week behind. But when I came up today, it was still not being worked on, so it's looking like it's gonna be a little bit longer. But once they do, we just need to remember that once they do shut it down, it's gonna be shut down for sixty days. So just be ready for that. Um, we also talked about replacing a two thousand four dump truck. As you know, we use our dump trucks to scrape the roads, and this one, uh, isn't felt that it will make it through the, uh, the winter. So we talked about getting another one. And that is it.
All right, thank you. On to, uh, city official reports. Rex, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to report on the Pumpkin Palooza. It, in my mind, was a great success, had hundreds of people and children in attendance. Uh, I'd like to thank Councilman Norman and Councilman Eads for dressing up for the occasion and and being there, walking amongst the kids in the crowd. It was quite a sight to see. I personally didn't make them all, but I assisted in, uh, making cotton candy. Uh, we made two hundred bags plus up in advance. They were gone in the first fifteen, twenty minutes. And then we proceeded to make cotton candy as they walked up and were in lines that exceeded the, uh, shelter house where we were located until the, uh, cotton candy machine pretty much overheated and was no longer properly functioning, so we had to quit making cotton candy. But it was a really big success. I'd like to report on the clinic. I do believe they had over a hundred kids finally signed up for that clinic. It was pretty remarkable. A lot of kids has never probably even seen a volleyball come and participated. They're really optimistic that it's gonna help out with the, since in the programs in the future. The, uh, Stormwater Project, uh, on Center Street, um, the delay is Columbia Gas has, has backed up the project. They have some gas lines that they have to move out of the way before we get started, and they're basically behind, so that was the problem with that. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you.
May I ask a question, please?
Yeah.
So I, I think the Pumpkin Palooza was a, a great event. I really appreciate having those kind of events here in London, Ohio. Uh, I was curious, how do we pay for that? I'm sure there was expense.
Kind of out of the Parks and Recreation Department budget.
Okay. Do we know what that ran?
Uh, I do not know the, the exact cost. I know, like, the cotton candy machine, uh, Village of Mount Sterling donated, let us use their machine for free. I think there was cost involved for the bounce houses, and we had cost involved for the, uh, juggling act and the magic act guy. Then we had some cost in buying the miniature pumpkin pies for the pumpkin pie eating contest, and we had costs in the pumpkins. I believe that's all the items that we had, but I don't know what the total is.
After the meeting.
Anything else?
Thanks. Yeah. Why are we allowing the, uh, the paving company that came into Amherst to throw all that gravel and synthetics in everybody's driveway and leave it all over the street to go in our storm sewer systems? In this day and age of environmental awareness?
The gravel and membrane that was put down has to have time to work into the, um...
Well, I understand that, but there's brooms, there's, there's blowers, there's even vacuums. I mean, they just came in and made messes on everybody's driveway and leave it laying all over the roads.
You've gotta let that stuff.
It's kind of like Omni again, Omni all over.
Bring the equipment in there, brushing on it, then it's not gonna work.
Well, I know.
I think what Brent's saying.
They make blowers, push brooms to get it out of people's driveways. They just came in. It's disrespectful.
There's a lot of loose gravel in the, in the curbs, in the concrete curbs.
Going in our storm sewers, yeah? And then, and, and they're all over everybody's driveway. I don't know if you got a, you know, five gallon bucket of that or not, but...
There's a lot of loose, loose stone and gravel in the curbs throughout.
I, I.
Can't be letting people come in here doing things like that.
I talked to Bill about it. Uh, the, the plan is to come back in the amount of time. I just don't think we have the, the manpower to go.
Well, I hate to see that stuff go down in our storm sewer systems when we're all paying ten dollars a month, you know, first storm sewer systems.
I don't know what was put down, Brent, I really don't.
I know, I know it's not edible.
This stuff is, is done in more cities than London, so I, I don't know what the procedures are. I'll have to talk to Bill about it. I would think it would take a very heavy rain to be able to wash stone down the sewer, storm sewer. So just hope we don't have any heavy downpours.
Thank you.
Okay, on to old business, up for a third rees, reading. Resolution one eighty-one dash twenty-four. Again, motion to read by title and number?
Make motion.
Second.
Res-
Just go ahead.
No, resolution, I, I'm writing down, first and second, I'm sorry. Uh, resolution one eighty-one dash twenty-four sponsored by John Stahl, a resolution approving an easement.
And this is what we talked about last meeting? The alley we approved, we own part of, you don't want to sell it because of it. If somebody might buy it, it said that the people should buy it. And that's both the eighty-one and eighty-two.
All right.
Any other discussion? Where council wishes?
Make motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution one eighty-one dash twenty-four has passed. On to resolution one eighty-two dash twenty-four. Again, motion to, to read by title and number?
Make motion.
Second.
I'll help you out here. A resolution approving an easement.
John?
Now, this is the same as the other one. Gets you a part of the alley, the neighbor next door to it. I moved to a down.
Second.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
All right, resolution one eighty-two dash twenty-four has passed. On for a second reading. Ordnance one eighty-four dash twenty-
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 182-24 has passed. On for a second reading. Ordinance 184-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Make motion.
Second.
Ordinance, I'll read it, I'll get, I'll help you out here. Ordinance 184-24, an ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area.
And it's exactly like Greg said, for the downtown area, should be good for them.
We do have a couple of points of discussion. First of all, we don't know what's going to happen to some of these locations, so we, when you look through these documents, if someone's online, it's posted, it's last meeting, I don't know if this one's up, but you can kind of go through and look. When you look at the map area, should we maybe consider adding where the old hotel is? That's an extension of the area by a block, however, we know the Westwood Collective, now Main Street London Collective, bought that. I don't know what their plans are. What if they decide to put a bar or a restaurant in there? We would then have to extend this later. This is just a discussion point, if we would like to maybe consider that. My second discussion point is, I did some research on other towns' doras, looked at Hilliard in Dublin very specifically. So one of the things that I noticed is they've set different hours than what we have. And I just wonder if we approve the hours that are within this document, which I believe is seven days a week, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., or 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., I believe is the correct number. Can we, as a city, decide then not to utilize all of those hours? So I think this might be a situation that if we get this approved through this process, that the city might be able to say, or council can say, we're not going to use all those hours. For example, maybe we only want the hours to be Monday through Thursday from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. On Friday and Saturday, maybe 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And on Sunday, we may say, no, we don't want to have a DORA effective on Sundays. That would be a rule that we would set place. However, we could extend those if we get this approved. If there's an event and we want a DORA on a Sunday, we, by council's approval, could do that. So I've seen some other cities have this type of a discussion and meeting, that they have a discussion to do an extension during a set period of time. So I just want to bring this forward tonight as a discussion point.
Doesn't the DORA have to follow the individual liquor license holders' license? Meaning if you have the right to purchase, the DORA gives you the right to leave that establishment within the DORA, but you have to purchase it from one of the liquor license holders?
Yes.
That was my understanding. None of the businesses downtown have a Sunday license that I'm aware of. Maybe, does Mad Cow have a Sunday license? They might be the only one.
I think Mad Cow does, because I've been there.
Well, I'm sure some of these other cities have had to adjust, you know, being the first time.
And I think Jim's Bar is open seven days a week. So that's the two extreme ends of this, right? Is Mad Cow and Jim's Bar. I believe it's seven days a week. Could be wrong about that.
Not sure.
I, you know, I think that's going to be up to council to seek input probably also from your public hearing and see what the public has to say about it. I agree with Greg, I think it's pretty broad, but we just kind of think Jennifer basically set it up that way and then we can adjust it however council sees fit. It is something that if later on you find out that it isn't working on a certain day, certain time, whatever, council can always amend this at any time. So it is mandated, you know, council basically sets the rules for it. We did find that we left one establishment off, I think Jennifer sent that out.
Yeah, right. The Legion was not included.
Right. So as far as going down to the, to the old hotel, that probably, you know, depends on what goes in there. The thing was, we didn't really want walking traffic going across the railroad tracks was one of the reasons that we stopped it before we stopped it. But again, it's council's wishes, if you want to extend it beyond that.
I think we should keep it all away from the railroad tracks.
So once this is approved, it's still council that can make adjustments and edit this. We don't have to go back and get approval from anyone else?
Right.
Okay.
It's all set, but the way I understand it, it's all set by council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ask a question. Can you, are you able to clarify if there's an event downtown? There's a little confusion on, if there's an event downtown like the Rib Fest that sells alcohol, how does that affect who?
Did you see the email?
I did not.
Yeah, I just sent an email explaining what that was.
Well, how did I miss it?
Oh, that was from the mayor.
Oh, that's probably why. But...
Did he just send it to you?
Maybe, I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't see one, but the question is, which, which, which rules over the others? Is it the DORA rules over the event or the event?
Hold on.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll defer to Shannon to share that.
Yeah, no, he sent it to you. It's from last week, your October 4 email.
Check your spam.
It's basically, they can exist in cohabitation with one another. Your DORA exists and then you can have a temporary permit, which is usually a 72-hour permit to a smaller area.
Right.
And then you, you can buy alcohol from the temporary permit holder as long as it's in the DORA-approved cups and then remove it from the temporary permit premises, but it doesn't go the other way. You can't take your DORA drink from a DORA vendor into the temporary permit premises.
Okay.
And basically, the larger you make the temporary permit premises, the smaller the DORA is for that purpose, but it's only for, you know, the extension of however long that temporary permit is in existence. So, but yes, they can exist. Hand in hand.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Again, public hearing on this is our next council meeting, November 7.
Bring your dump trucks.
Onto new business, resolution 185-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Make motion.
Second.
Resolution 185-24, resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds.
Yes, this is for a new dump truck for the Street Maintenance Department we were talking about at the last service meeting. They're in bad need of it.
Is this a new, brand-new truck?
I believe so. He said he's looked at a couple of them.
Is this something readily available or is this something with weight on?
He said he had his eyes on two, two or three of them, so I'm assuming they're in stock.
We talked about in service meetings, pending, going through finance also to make sure we're financially settled in a way to, you know, put this, or appropriate this, these funds.
As long as we get it before a snowstorm, right? Because it's going to have a plow in the front of it, too.
Any other discussion on this tonight? Okay. Onto ordinance 186-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Make motion.
Second.
Ordinance 186-24, an ordinance declaring the necessity for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets of the City of London, estimating the cost thereof and providing for the levy of special assessment.
That's something we have to do every two years. We're allowed by the Ohio Revised Code, and we've used this ever since '86, I think it was. Maybe two years, we just renewed it. We have to do it now and pass it, it has to go through the county treasurer, and they take care of all the money that comes in through there.
Is this proposal to keep the special assessment at the same, I'm not sure what the proper term is, if it's millage or the dollar amount that it is?
It's a dollar amount, 40,000.
Yeah, okay.
They take the dollar amount into the, however many the taxation is now. Everybody's a polygamy down.
Millage varies according to produce that amount of money.
This same, this is the same $40,000 that the city has had by way of special assessment since forever?
Just about.
Okay.
So should we discuss or should we consider, is $40,000 enough? Because this year, we had to increase that, and that had to come from general fund, I would believe, that they ran out of money?
No, they just, they had money left over in the fund where they didn't use the whole 40,000 in prior years.
From before?
Yeah. I do believe this would have to be a ballot issue if you wanted to increase the amount.
Yeah, because it's only, it's a single issue and it's split between the city and the county, if I understand it properly, so we can't take any action separate from county action on that. And it would be a tax bill, so it probably is a ballot issue anyway.
So if we were to increase it, we would have to go back to the ballot, but to just renew this or ask for this to be renewed, council takes this action and it's the same dollar amount?
Yeah.
Because the other discussion I'd like to have, and I've had this discussion with the law director to some degree, is using the funds from this tree fund to fix sidewalks that were damaged by trees. And I've talked to many members of city council personally over time, and I think most of them agree that if a city plant a tree damages a sidewalk, it should not necessarily be the property owner's responsibility to fix that when we planted the tree there. So I asked the law director about this in a conversation the other day, and she, she felt that under the maintenance part of this, that it would apply if we wanted to do that, if we decided to do that. She did not think we needed to make a change here, however, the tree commission would then be tasked with, the responsibility if someone wants to apply to have their sidewalk repaired and a cost, they would be tasked with spending the money to repair the sidewalks. So whether or not we need to make the change to this or just consider this for, have the tree commission consider this or council consider this moving forward, I've heard enough, enough people complain about trees and the removal of a tree. I know I, we sent one to you, Mr. Castle, I believe it was on East Fifth Street where there was a larger tree removed, I believe, by the city, and it upheaved the sidewalks considerably that weren't that way before. And he was just asking, how do I get this repaired? I didn't do this. It wasn't like that when I bought the house and now it is. So it just brings that discussion, do we want to see if, or do we want to discuss these funds being used in a way, they haven't been used before, but maybe they should be?
Yes, we do, Greg.
Okay.
Tree commission, maybe once a month, right?
I don't think they meet at all.
We, if we have items to discuss, we'll meet, yes.
Any other discussion on this tonight? Onto resolution 187-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Motion.
Second.
Resolution 187-24, sponsored by Brett McDaniel's, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract.
And this is so Rex can buy a new dump truck after it goes through finance and before the snowstorm.
Now, does this have to be bid out or not?
No, he'll buy it under a dealership that's under the state procurement.
Okay.
Program.
So we don't have to enter into contract, we're entering into bids for this, we can just do that if he goes through one of those? Okay.
Any other discussion on this? Onto roundtable. Michael?
Not a lot. I guess, thanks for those who came out, appreciate that. Thanks for those who tuned in. It was a great, Pumpkin Palooza was great, just like Rex said, there was a lot of people there, a lot of kids. It was, it was just great. And we, it wasn't just Beetlejuice and the Lion, we had, we had a fairy there and a clown. The clown was a little scary. We had the juggler there, the magician, and it flowed very well. We had the food trucks, which unfortunately, that's where we were, like a 10 away from the food trucks, so got to smell that all day. But it was a good smell. But it was a great event, and if you didn't get to go, we got next year to look forward to. It was really great. I also wouldn't, wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I did not say that this weekend, the London Lions Club is having our second annual eyeball. It's going to be out at the Madison County Fairgrounds, it's from 8 to 7, or 8 to 7, wow, that'd be, 8 to 11 on Saturday, and that's PM. If you can't make the eyeball, we also are having a pumpkin carving contest. You don't have to come to the event, but you do have to come to drop it off. We're going to do that between 5 and 7. We have prizes, first, second, and third for two age groups. So if you're 0 to 12, you're in there in your own group, and then from 13 up is another group. Other than that, thanks for coming out and have a great rest of the week.
Thank you. John?
I just had a question for Rex. We've, I've had so many people ask about, I've seen myself, when you're coming off of Kenny, going on Lafayette, cemented trucks instead of turning are going through the gas station. Because they're having a hard time turning, I guess, I don't know what, but...
What kind of trucks?
Same eyes.
I think that would be really difficult to navigate. It would be just as bad.
It's easy going this way and it is turning.
Well, that, if there's a police officer there, they should be sighting them because that's avoiding a controlled intersection and it's citable, so I'll mention it to the police department to keep an eye on.
That's all I have.
Shannon?
Yeah, small, a small personal plug, the London State Theater is hosting its first time silent movie event with live, live music provided by yours truly, October 31st, 8 o'clock.
All right.
After Trick or Treat?
Trick or Treat will be over.
Beggar Night was...
Beggar Night will have ended.
Yeah, the movie is Nosferatu, 1922.
Andy?
Thanks for everyone who's watching and everyone who's here tonight showing an interest in the city. And service meeting is November 12th at 5 o'clock in the meeting room next door. And that's it.
Brett?
I attended the Pumpkin Palooza and it was a blast. I also attended the little farm market downtown and sidewalks down there are in terrible shape, so I agree with Greg, we need to do everything and anything we can to get the ball rolling on repairing these sidewalks. And Andy, thanks for filling in for me while I was chipping on chocolate earlier. Other than that, that's all I got, thanks.
Greg?
I also agree the Pumpkin Palooza, I think, was a great event for the City of London. I don't know who, I think I know who organized that, and if, and if it was Eve Reedlove, if she was the main organizer, I thank her publicly for that because it was a really nice event. I think families really enjoyed it. I was not at the event that you had over the summer, but I believe it was also well-attended. And, and these are the type of events I like to see our Recreation Department hold. It's not just a kid's sport program, this is for, you know, it's for kids mostly, I think, but it's, it's, it's an outdoor event that people can attend at no cost. And even if there is a cost, I was just curious about, even if there's a cost to the city, if it's within reason, I think it's very reasonable to do these types of events for the, for the public. Lion Michael and/or Councilmember Norman mentioned the eyeball, I'm going to mention that also. Eyeballs from 8 to 11, we're going to have a DJ, we're going to have dancing, we're going to have some, some small food there, there will be some adult beverages available for sale, we're going to have a costume contest, it'll be a fun time. The Pumpkin Carving Contest, once again, is open to the public, there's never been one of those of this type that I know of. Drop off your pumpkins from 5 to 7, we'll have the participants of the eyeball judge the pumpkins. We now have a pumpkin carver coming to the event, which is a new add-on, I think that'll be kind of cool. And the next finance meeting will be October 21st, 5:30, in the conference room next door. Thanks to all.
Can I add something to that? About that Pumpkin Palooza, some of us are young enough to remember. About that Pumpkinpalooza, some of us are young enough to remember the Circleville Pumpkin Show.
It's still going on, Brent, go down.
It started out real small. This, this could really get, get really big. It seemed like people were excited about it, you know? Plenty of room for it, so that's all.
Thank you to you guys for coming out tonight. Just wanna give a shout-out to the high school football team, Aitno, they have two remaining regular season games.
Big games.
Yeah, big games. Also wanna shout-out to the London High School volleyball girls team, they finished the regular season, finished in second place, and also the London girls tennis team, they finished in second place. That's all I have. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
7:14.
3-1.
Good. That was the first, bottom six, 3 to 1. I'll go home and be able to watch the rest of it.
How about chocolate? Right after August.
Yep. Oh, that's right. Lord has ordered a new president. We would like to offer, the next time we need, we'll have, we'll have a new president.